That's right, and they have like the, okay. I have no.
I don't know where under your last one, that was up five thirty in the flight.
Oh, yeah, that's right, it's a lot shorter.
And just walk the whole of tonight's meeting.
For sure. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. We have, I, we do have a full board tonight, Daryl McComme stepped away for a second, but we do have a full board this evening. We are here at Braintree Town Hall. This meeting is being broadcast on B Cam TV and is available on YouTube. As we always do, we start with the business items at seven P M. and move on to the public hearings at seven fifteen. I, a note for, I'm not calling it right now, but on the list at the seven fifteen hearings is the two fifty Granite Street, the special permit pending for the mall. The Simon Properties and the applicant for this special permit did file a request to continue. So just wanted to give anybody here for that project a heads up on that. We do have to wait until seven fifteen to officially call that meeting. But with that, I will move on to the old new business section of the agenda. And although it's not on here, I would like to, or welcome, I suppose, Peter Matczak to the Planning Department, and Peter, if you'd like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, thank you so much, so yeah, thank you. My name is Peter Matczak, and it's day two here on Braintree. So thank you so much for welcoming me and with the help of Connor and Louise, they're giving me a trial by fire, knowledge and history of Braintree, which has been great. So thank you so much, it's lovely to be here today, and I look forward to working with everybody here on projects coming up.
All right, great, and we're glad to have you, so welcome again, thank you. All right, so I think actually the rest of the items on the business meeting should be fairly quick, because the first one, request for minor modification by Simon Property Group, there was a request to continue that, or because it's not a public hearing, it's a essentially a request to table it, so we'll be tabling that one without testimony to the May, what's the date of that, May twelve, May thirteenth, to the May thirteenth Planning Board Agenda. The next item is eight, ten, and forty Arnold Street, that's a request for minor modification by Adam Street Enterprises. There was a request on that one as well to table that until May thirteenth, so we'll be putting that on the May thirteenth Agenda. Which brings us to the approval of meeting minutes for March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Are there any members who had any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? None, looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion by Member Kane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor? Aye.
I need to abstain.
Oh, correct, yes, all right.
Thank you.
And one abstaining. And Member McComme is not here at the moment to vote. The next item on there is the Planning Board fees, and we're going to table that one without testimony as well to May thirteenth. And so now that we moved through that, in four minutes, we have about a ten-minute break until we can call the public hearings at seven fifteen. All right, it is now past seven fifteen, so we can move on to the public hearing section of the Agenda. The first item that we have on the Agenda is two fifty Granite Street, one thirty-one and one thirty-five Lakeside Drive, Planning Board File two thousand and five oh two. We did receive a request for continuance based on outstanding peer review that is ongoing, and that would be a continuance to the May thirteenth Agenda. Do we have a motion on the request to continue?
So moved.
All right, but a tie, I think that was a motion by Member McComme, and a second by Member Conley, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right. Member Kane, and I think you are recused on the next two, is that right?
Just seven Hawthorne.
Oh, just seven Hawthorne, okay, great. All right, so the next item on our Agenda is one twenty-five Union Street, Planning Board File twenty-three oh one. So if we have the applicant here, I know we've received some additional materials from all parties and a staff report, and if we have the applicant, like to give a presentation?
Planning Board Frank Marinelli, for the record. As you've heard in prior hearings, I represent Torrington Properties. Torrington is a premier developer, and they have about eighty properties, about eight hundred million dollars in properties in their portfolio. They bought the blighted Motel Six site in March of twenty-two, so over three years ago, and they've worked diligently with the town, with the department, with the staff, with the department heads, we've had various meetings over the past few months in regards to the modification that has been sought. And the modification is of Decision twenty-three oh one. In December of twenty-three, the Planning Board approved the project at that time, which included a Chick-fil-A and Brookline Bank, and since then, as we know, Chick-fil-A had terminated their interest in the site in September of twenty-four. Twenty, Decision twenty-three oh one had extensive conditions, so what we've done, Torrington has engaged in market analysis and also modified the development. So the development now is a forty-two hundred fifty-one square foot approximate building at the Easterly end, and another ten thousand one hundred and eighty square foot building that you can see in the, towards the lower left corner of the chart here. And it's a retail center. We have a letter, letters of intent, a letter of intent for this building from Shake Shack, a letter of intent for one of the pads, the end pad, the Easterly end of the larger pad for Cava, and also Brookline Bank, another use by right at the Westerly end of that building. The middle is being looked at by various possible tenants, including veterinary and other types of uses. So as the Board knows, we did receive approval of the zoning board. We've, we've got all of the parking and setbacks that have been approved. We have a very robust landscape plan. The site has not had any landscaping in the past. We're developing something that the town can be proud of. The developer, Torrington, has already invested approximately nine point eight million dollars in the site, which includes the acquisition and all of the site work that has been performed to create the nice, neat, ready, pad-ready site that you see currently out there. So we're very anxious to get above ground, we have to get above ground, while the weather is good, we have to build and build these two buildings, and we have no question that the space that is available will fill, and hopefully the, the levers of intent that have been signed by Shake Shack, Cava, and Brookline Bank will all come to fruition with leases. These are uses by right, as the Board knows, the zone is a highway business zone, so all the, all the uses that are being proposed are uses by right. So we hope to move on and move forward with a development that the town can be proud of, instead of the blight that has existed down there for far too long. In addition to all of the site investment, there's also over a million dollars in improvements to the intersection. Our entire team is here again tonight. Sean Donahue, who's a project manager from Torrington Properties, also Jeff Dirk, our traffic engineer from V A I., and Greg DeBarna, our civil engineer from Bowler Engineering. Greg appeared before the Conservation Commission on Thursday night, and they approved the modification that's before you tonight. All of the peer reviews, traffic, civil engineering have come back favorably, so we respectfully request approval of the project so we can build it this year, this spring. And we've reviewed the proposed draft conditions, and they are acceptable. Thank you.
Assistant Director Murphy, I know that we have a draft decision on this, do you have anything else you can fill in on that?
Yes, certainly, if I may, through the chair, to the Board. A lot of the changes in the decision are reflective of the change in the development plan, dotted i's, crossing t's. The real changes that I would like to hone on and vet with the Board apply to certain traffic conditions. If we go to condition, pardon me, page twenty-three, Condition forty-five B. I think we all know that when Chick-fil-A was here, we had used empirical data, and that really drove the traffic count up, and we were cognizant of that, and we had put several safeguards within this decision to get this project underway and also protect the area. Under forty-five B., and I'll just read it for the sake of the public hearing, ninety days prior to, for a request for temporary certificate of occupancy or permanent certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall coordinate with the Braintree Police Department, the Town's Administration, and the Department of Planning and Community Development to develop a grand opening traffic and parking management plan that may include the use of police detailed traffic controls along any affected intersection, state or local way, including the curb cut along Union Street, with expenses paid for by the applicant. The time, days, and location of the required police detailed traffic controls shall be at the discretion of the Braintree Police Department. Should the traffic derived from the authorized activity create a public nuisance, the applicant shall be required to implement immediate mitigative measures, including but not limited to reduced hours, capacity within the drive-through, or limited drive-through offerings as required by the Braintree Police Department or the Special Permit Granting Authority slash Planning Board. Now, in that condition, the one main change here is we removed the word closure from the prior approval. Based on the prior approval and the record traffic materials, that language was warranted. This time around, the applicant's development plan offers close to a forty-four percent reduction in the overall traffic. In addition to that, the applicant is holding the original mitigation as proposed for when it was Chick-fil-A. In other words, the project is overmitigated. So as staff, in working with the applicant and in working with our peer review engineer, we felt comfortable removing the closure language from that specific condition and inserting language relative to the use of the drive-through and limited offerings. We've done that with other sites throughout town, we've done that with the Dunkin' Donuts at the corner of Washington and Hancock Street, and I believe we tried to do that with McDonald's, and they actually surpassed that condition. They were able to prove that they could manage that workload. So other than that, the rest of the conditions from there are pretty much the same, just swapping out different dates on different plans. The other couple of removals, if some of the Board members may recall, towards the tail end of the decision, we had asked the applicant to provide allowances for the community to use the site on Sundays, granted because Chick-fil-A was going to be closed. That's no longer the case, as the site's going to be open during the day for its different tenants, so we've removed those conditions.
Thank you. All right, and this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience here for one twenty-five Union Street? All right, any other Board members? All right, any of the board members have any comments or questions? Member McCamey?
Thank you. I liked Assistant Director Murphy's definition of overmitigation, I don't think there's never overmitigation, it's all very helpful, but I appreciate the emphasis, and I certainly recognize the fact that the applicant, which I think to their benefit, is maintaining all the mitigation that they originally came up with, so...
Thank you for that, because I appreciate Torrington getting the credit for that, because they have accepted some very robust traffic conditions that were adopted for Chick-fil-A, and as the staff pointed out, 44% is 44%, 44% reduced vehicle trips does account for some overmitigation, because, you know, we have 44% less vehicle trips. Jeff Dirk is here from VAI, if you want more detail on that, but there is monitoring that goes on, as you know, and that kind of monitoring in, you know, various projects that have been approved shows the vehicle trips being less than what was projected. So we feel very comfortable with the analysis, and also, you know, we're putting the sidewalk all the way up Ivory Street to where the recycling and MBTA intersection is, we're putting the sidewalk in around the whole frontage to try to encourage pedestrians from the MBTA to be able to walk to the site as well. So I think, you know, all of those improvements make it a very beneficial development in the commercial district for the town to increase tax base in the commercial district. That's what we're looking to do with economic development that's needed in Braintree.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Marinelli. As I said at the last meeting, you know, I think you need robust mitigation in this case because of the location, the one-way aspects, despite the potential for a reduction in traffic from previous applicant. My position, as I've stated, I think as you know, is let's be careful. We have unknown entities coming in, you're filling two out of, what, five or six slots in the other building, so we don't really know what's going to come in, okay, five, Cava's only going to take one, so, again, my feeling is, let's be very careful. This is one of the major intersections in town, and it carries over to other major roadways and intersections, and I think that the adjustment that the Assistant Director said is fine in terms of the, you know, making traffic adjustments, we need to have that capability, we need to have that, I'll just call it conservatism, you know, I hope I'm wrong, I hope you're right, I hope the traffic is much less, I hope we don't have any problems, but just in case, to me, it's important that we plan for the worst case. So I think these changes are fine, I think the mitigation is great, and I guess, I hope you're able to fill the other slots, and we'll, hopefully it doesn't, you know, create too much additional volume, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Kane?
Just one question, and that is where the U-turn will be made, from southbound on Ivory back to northbound on Ivory, is there enough radius there to be able to handle, you know, certainly cars, but, you know...
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because the, over the past year or more, we've looked at various ways to handle the turn, given the layout of the site, and it's impossible to do anything safely other than to do the left turn on Ivory Street, and go down Ivory Street a few hundred feet, Jeff can give you the exact calculation, roughly halfway or thereabouts, and then do that radius, and that radius does work, and it does create a turning lane that I think it basically will allow five to six cars, and we don't reach that kind of stacking. But when you turn and come back and head northerly on Ivory Street, the, one of the changes in this plan is that you can then take a right directly into the site from Ivory Street, so there's a new curb cut that wasn't present with the Chick-fil-A development, that now you can take a right and access the site from Ivory Street, or you can keep going around into the main entrance.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes?
The Chair, Mr. Kent, we had the 100% design plans for the off-site mitigation, which included that forward turn, and that turn and its radius was peer reviewed by a professional engineer, and they found that turn to be satisfactory.
Member Conley?
Thank you, I had a couple of questions related to construction and the construction timeline. With these changes to the site plan, would you anticipate the duration of, like, the construction on site to be?
What, I'm sorry, what was the...
How long will construction take?
Is it a year or what, less, right? I mean, it's a simple building, yeah.
For the record, Sean Donahue from Torrington Properties. So we estimate probably about six months, five months for the building, about a month of probably site development leading up to it, so we're hoping by mid-November or so to have the building core and shell completed, and then tenants coming in mid-November, and they'll probably have about four months of construction.
And then, does your construction plan include all of the construction vehicles being on site, like, there wouldn't be any stacking on the roadway?
That's correct.
Okay, and then my last question was related to the intersection, Union and Grossman, do you know how long that part of the traffic improvements would take?
I would estimate about two and a half to three months.
Okay.
Fair?
Very good, thank you.
Member Kane?
No further questions?
Member Kane?
No additional questions, I'm in support of the amended proposal.
All right, thank you. And I don't have any questions either, I do also want to express my appreciation for confirming that you were good with the conditions, as Assistant Director Murphy had incorporated them in providing the red lines, so we could clearly see the back and forth and going along with the Chick-fil-A mitigation, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Should have asked this earlier, but Member Conley, did you do the Mullen Rule?
I submitted it last week, thank you.
Okay, so the voting members on the application will be Member Kane, Conley, Kent, myself, and Member McCamey, apologies. All right, so if there are no other questions, we're looking for a motion to enter the correspondence through April 9th into the record.
So moved.
We have a motion by Member Kent, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Member Kane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now we're looking for a motion on the application for special permit and, a major modification for special permit and site plan review.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Member Kent, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have the next item on our agenda is Seven Hawthorne Road and 338 Elm Street, applicant, like to get prepared? Okay, all right, thank you. You too. All right, and again, this is Seven Hawthorne Road and 338 Elm Street, and just, whenever you're ready.
Good morning, good evening. Mike Modestino representing the applicants, Charles Bachelder is here, and George Clements is here, here with Sean Hardy, who's going to provide some explanation about some of the issues involved, Eric Diaz, the, working on the peer review part of this thing with Sean Hardy is here, and he's also available to discuss any issues that arise. Proposed site plan review with orders of condition, we've looked at them, we feel fairly comfortable with them, there may be some comments that Mr. Clements may want to make, we appreciate the effort that the planning department has done in putting this together, and we obviously want the board to consider the issues that have been addressed. We've been before the Conservation Commission, and we've received approval on April 3rd, waiting for the appeal period to go by on that. We had a ZBA approval on the project on January 27th, it was recorded in the registered deeds on March 18th. We feel that this is an important project for the town, we believe that it's been vetted properly by all aspects of the project for the benefit of the residents and for the benefit of the people that may live there. The town needs an over 55 housing development, in my opinion, it's a great opportunity for the town and the residents. Jeff Dirk is here today, not for us, but he's testified before, and he wrote the report from Vanessan Associates about the traffic issues, so I believe that we've addressed Green Tech wrote a letter discussing the removal of 297 trees, 238 trees outside the wetlands, and 66 described as dead or compromised, 59 trees with, within the wetlands boundary, 22 of these identified as being dead or compromised. So I believe that we've addressed all these issues, we're certainly here to answer any questions that the board members may have, and I would ask the board to direct any questions to Mr. Hardy at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Director Murphy, do you have anything to add at this time?
If we could have our peer review consultant, Eric Diaz, just give a brief overview of the second letter that he issued at the beginning of March, and then some further staff comment I'd like to make after that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, Eric Diaz, Registered Professional Engineer, Strongpoint Engineering, this microphone is very sensitive. Yeah, so we have performed, we've gone back and forth on a few things, I think we have provided a final peer review letter on this. If you recall, when we, the last time we were here, our concern was where the test pits that were performed were located. They were located on the site, far away from the wetland and higher in grade, and a lot of the design relies on infiltration in the lower portions of the site, which, where presumably groundwater would be higher. So, you know, typically in a case like that, we say, let's go out there and do some more test pits, obviously, the applicant, for various reasons, didn't want to go disturb the site further, and Mr. Hardy had a plan that is sort of what we're calling a Plan B, right? If all else fails and we can't infiltrate on the lower portion of the site, what happens? Will it still, will the project still work, will it still function appropriately and meet the regulatory requirements? So they did submit that Plan B to us, we reviewed it pretty thoroughly, well, very thoroughly, and the answer is yes, it will. So what we're recommending in this case in that regard to additional soil testing is that, now, the board certainly could approve the project with this Plan B being a safe backup, but when equipment is mobilized to the site, it's our recommendation that the first thing that be done is additional test pits in those lower locations, so that way, any changes that need to be made are known upfront before anything else happens on the site, and certainly if anything substantial was to need to be changed in the plans, it would be, you know, re-peer reviewed, re-vetted, and any major changes would have to come back before the board. Aside from that, we have reviewed the revised design, we had a couple of comments that were more housekeeping things, a few things that didn't translate perfectly from maybe the hydraulic calculations to the plan set, but we've reviewed them, we don't think that they're going, well, we know that they're not going to impact the design to any great degree, so our recommendation is that a full set of plans be provided to the planning office for, you know, final review, and given to the board for endorsement. But I think if the board, from a stormwater perspective, if the board wanted to move forward with an approval on this, I think they could do that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Assistant Director Murphy, did you want to add on to that at this time?
Yes, if I could provide a brief overview of the draft decision in front of you?
Great, thank you.
Awesome. So staff did prepare draft findings and conditions, we made findings based under 135-711, which was the site plan review criteria, those findings dictate what's depicted within the record materials, what was submitted with the application, and then ultimately the conditions of approval that are contained within the decision. As Mr. Diaz had pointed out earlier, there's still some more peer review work to be done. The applicant filed this application on December 18th, as I'm sure you're well aware, there were changes to the site's drainage design, and we've been working with the applicant on keeping the bulk going here, so to speak. We feel comfortable that the applicant should be able to satisfy the comments raised in the second peer review letter. The key issue here is going out there and performing those test pits. Decision is conditioned that the applicant is going to have to work with our peer review consultant and our department to be able to identify where those test pits are going to occur. In addition to that, we have requested a construction phasing plan from the applicant, you know, how are you going to attack the site number one, you know, first is the test pits, but then comes the clearing, the grubbing, the site prep, site drive aisle, the utilities, stormwater infiltration units, and then ultimately the foundations for the townhouse-style condo. So we're asking for that construction phasing plan, what's your proposed schedule, and being mindful that this site is located in the neighborhood, this isn't off the main thoroughfare. We have proposed conditions relative to truck traffic, staff has suggested a truck route that comes from the Braintree split, they go down Washington to Church, they go up Church, they take the left onto Elm, and then they access the site through Old Elm Street. They are not allowed to use the neighborhood as a cut-through, they are not allowed to go towards East Braintree, that is the only truck route that they are allowed to use. In addition to that, we have some conditions relative to the dust control plan and the pest control report, we are asking that, in regards to dust, that the applicant keep multiple water trucks on site. If the applicant's going to start construction or start prepping the site in June, come August in the drier weather, it could get a little dusty, people are going to be in their backyards, it's going to be summer, so we're asking for appropriate dust control measures there. As it relates to the road control, we're asking for monthly pest reports be submitted to our department, as well as the health department. One comment, and it's reflected within the draft conditions, under Condition 35, as it relates to the fire department, prior to the start of the authorized activity, the applicant shall submit a circulation plan that depicts the largest fire apparatus with the fire division of the town of Braintree circulating the internal drive of the site, including profiles of the proposed topography stamped and signed by a registered professional engineer. We've been working with the applicant for the past couple of months on bringing that in, they provided a truck circulation plan, it was not stamped, so hopefully they can get that done in short order before they start. As it relates to landscaping, we have a tree protection ordinance, the applicant is proposing to remove a fairly high amount of trees, you take one look at the site, it's pretty heavily mature, vegetated, so we are at, the applicant's going to have to go to the tree committee to establish a fee for the cost of replacement of trees that he's not putting in on site as it stands right now, in talking with Mr. Clements, as I understand it, he's working with other people in the community to plant off-site plantings, I have encouraged Mr. Clements to add additional screening and buffering within the side and... rear yard setbacks to the homes along Blanchard and Home Park Road. So that way, it negates the total amount that he's going to have to contribute to the Back in January, we did have Mr. Dirk make a presentation on the proposed traffic of this development. In Mr. Dirk's trip generation memo, there's 18 new vehicle trips during the morning peak, 22 new vehicle trips during the PM peak. Those do not go past any of the thresholds in Article 14 within our Braintree zoning ordinance. That being said, we have asked the applicant to provide some low-impact mitigation to the neighborhood. We are asking that a no-left-turn sign during the morning peak and the afternoon peak be installed at the approach to Elm Street from the project site. So that's that curb cut off of Old Elm before you go up the hill towards the pizza shop and the tracks. You cannot take a left during the morning peak and the afternoon peak. Additionally, we are asking the applicant to install a no-U-turn sign at the approach to Hawthorne Road from the project site. As it stands now, it's off-centered. It sort of puts you there, and historically, people have done that U-turn over the existing island on Hawthorne. We're trying to prevent those movements. Just quickly on parking, the parking requirement for the site's 102 parking spaces. The applicant's providing 118 parking spaces. Each unit's going to have two spaces, one internal to the garage, one in the driveway, and then there's guest parking surrounding the drive aisle and adjacent to the proposed Condition 47, we're asking the applicant to submit a plan stamped and signed by a Registered Professional Engineer depicting all stopping site distances from the curb cut on Old Elm Street. At the end of that condition, the applicant shall be responsible to maintain all stopping site distances in accordance with the Braintree zoning bylaw. So we are asking for that plan to be submitted. Just a few conditions from the operational side of things. We are asking the applicant to stake out the property lines by a Registered Professional Surveyor prior to the start of construction. We are also asking the applicant, once they finish designing some of these townhomes, to provide us with an updated lighting plan. The applicant provided one earlier. It showed the lighting within the drive aisle and some typical light installations that would go into the different townhouses. Things change. We'd be asking for updates to those plans and making sure that the lumens are at 0.0 at the property lines. Just quickly, we're asking the applicant to submit a draft of the master deed. What our department's specifically looking for in the master deed for the condo is essentially incorporation of this decision as referenced within the registry information. We're asking that the record operation and management plan for the stormwater management system be incorporated. Citation for private trash collection, they're not subject to weekly curbside pickup, they're going to have to work with a trash vendor on that. Prohibition of parking within the drive aisle, there's visitor parking there, that should be enforced. Record snow storage areas, if they can't provide the snow storage, then it needs to be trucked off-site and disposed of. And then an age restriction to 55 years or older. In addition to that, just quickly on the grading and the retaining walls, as I'm sure if you look on the site plans, they're cutting into the top and they're filling at the bottom. We're asking the applicant, prior to the start of authorized activity, and this is referenced in Condition 60A, that they submit a revised plan set prepared by a Registered Professional Engineer, stamped and signed, that achieves the following. Introduction of swales and minor walls between unit buildings, and in addition, lowering of the retaining wall heights at the northern and southern portions of the site. We're not asking for them to reinvent the wheel here, but we're asking them to soften those cuts and fills. 60B, depending on how that looks, should the department determine that the revised grading of the site requires professional review, the applicant shall deposit funds to the Department of Planning, Community Development, as determined based on solicitation, to review the site's current and revised grading design by a peer review consultant. That pretty much covers most of the conditions. The other conditions as proposed here are typical to a project, you know, asking for compliance with Article 11, our environmental standards within the zoning ordinance. That covers a lot between construction operation times, noise, et cetera. And focusing heavily, in this case, and reflected within this decision, ultimately, the compliance with the peer review letter, the stormwater improvements, and then the grading of the site itself.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'll see if there is anyone in the public that has any comments or questions on this application. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joe Reynolds, Council District Two Counselor, Weston Avenue. As the counselor for this district, I just wanted to say that I'm very, I'm thankful of the hard work that's been put in. The applicant demonstrated a spirit of collaboration with myself and, most importantly, the neighbors. This is a challenging application for the simple fact, it is a very emotional. And it's a significant change to this neighborhood, and in particular, the spiritual center that existed there for, since the late 1940s. And that's a very emotional thing to a lot, near and dear to a lot of the folks who grew up in the neighborhood, perhaps don't live there any longer. Those who had marriages there, had their sacraments there, their laid parents to rest or other family members to rest, myself included. It's very difficult, but we know that times change. And it was very important that this site, the archdiocese, wasn't able to maintain this particular site. And I didn't really have any insights into why the decision to close this particular church, but it was a sad one just the same. It is what it is in terms of the church's plans to maintain the archdiocese, and it affected our neighborhood. So it was very, very important for us to be able to find a solution or a future use of that site that would be compatible with the neighborhood and the residential character of the neighborhood. I want to thank Mr. Clements for consistently staying engaged with myself, with the town, with the neighbors. We did try to ensure that we were keeping the neighborhood informed as things progressed, various challenges, what some of the ideas were. And I felt it was very, very important for this neighborhood to see a use on that site that was compatible with the family-oriented neighborhood that it is. It is prominently, very prominently, single-family homes. And the solution and the final design of this site, I feel very strongly, is compatible. There was a mention by Mr. Modestino, this will be the first time that a 55 and older development has been built in the town of Braintree. And it's something, myself having been involved with the planning department, the planning board, going back to the early 90s as a town counselor, working for the town for a short period of time, that it's really important that we find a diverse and valuable inventory of housing options for our community. I think all the communities around Braintree and the greater Boston area, and really, across the country, is a huge challenge for us all. And we have to find a solution that works best for what is best for our community as a whole. I know not everyone will be happy. I'm hoping that over time, when this project is underway, when it is completed and into the future, it will become a part of that neighborhood that fits, and I feel very strongly about that. It fits appropriately, and I think that it will. So I'm looking forward to that spirit of cooperation, again, with Mr. Clements's team as we perform or they perform the development. The demolition was a difficult thing, but I want to commend Mr. Clements in the way that it was handled, keeping the neighborhood informed. It's going to be very important, the mitigation during construction, that that is adhered to. And I know the planning department, working with Connor for a number of years, and our new planning director, and welcome. Good to see you again. So that this will, this will work for all of us. And if there's going to be any types of problems that do occur unforeseen, that there'll be a true spirit of cooperation in making sure that all of those issues are handled, communicated, and that we will do the best that we can to ensure that all the best interests of the neighborhood, and of course, the property owner, Mr. Clements, and Mr. Bachelder, my apologies, Mr. Bachelder, that we'll work together and find a good solution for everybody. So I want to, again, thank you very much for this process, the due diligence that's been demonstrated by the staff, by the board itself. You really have done a great job, I think, in asking the right questions, looking over the horizon and trying to anticipate, how do we keep the things we don't expect to happen not to happen? So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I'll turn to member comments or questions. Member McCallum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick things. Where do we stand on the Affordable Housing Mitigation Plan?
I'd have Mr. Clements come up and speak to that.
For the record, Judge Clements, Hawthorne Preserve. As I had indicated earlier, we've worked with the mayor's office and we've come to an agreement that prior to the last occupancy certificate, we're going to purchase either a two-family, find suitable land to build, two affordable housing units off-site.
Okay, before the final...
Before the final occupancy.
Before any certificate of occupancy is...
Final occupancy, yeah. So we don't want to front-load mitigation, right? So our interests, the town's interest is secured by holding that last occupancy certificate.
Okay. Well, you heard Director, Assistant Director, over mitigation is good, Mr. Clements, so...
And you have plenty of it here, so I think you're well protected.
All right, thank you. My second question is, who's going to continue on, since these are going to be condominiums, who's going to continue on as the property manager?
So the way we'll start the process, we'll maintain it till probably the last seal, and then we'll work with the, you know, we'll appoint a board, and then we'll work with them to bring on a property manager. It's a little larger than for the homeowners association to manage. So, you know, we'll work with the homeowners association after the appointments of the board to procure some pricing and some contract work for them.
Okay, thank you. Since we have another project in front of us, which has potential water and sewer issues, and this is, of course, a new use, although the church and the school was there, where do we stand in terms of the capacity on the water and sewer side?
So our capacity, we have plenty of capacity. We've met with water and sewer. And again, this is 51 units as opposed to the other being much, much, much more impactful than 51 units. So, you know, we're retaining quite a bit of our own runoff on-site. So much smaller, better capacity on our site, we believe.
Okay, so the water department is giving you confidence that you're within the bounds?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. My last question, Madam Chair, is for the Assistant Director Murphy. And much like our previous project, obviously, this one has slightly different traffic challenges, if you will. So with some of the mitigation that you proposed, do you feel that we have enough protection once we actually see how things operate and can make adjustments as necessary?
So to answer that question to the Chair, the member McCallum, as I stated before, they're below our traffic thresholds under Article 14. So that being said, there, we've been working with the applicant on handling any issues that derive from traffic. As I noted earlier, the no-left-turn onto Elm Street there, that's going to be huge because that queues up in the afternoon and it queues up in the morning, and it could create a traffic situation. So we're essentially trying to flow the traffic to the intersection from that approach, and then when it reaches Hawthorne, avoiding a safety issue with the U-turn and forwarding it down Hawthorne towards, I believe it's Vaxton Street, and then towards Capens there. Aside from that, in working with our DPW and our town engineer and talking with our police department, we held several interdepartmental meetings here in Town Hall, going over these different issues. The configuration of the existing intersection is not ideal. It's off-centered, it's malaligned. This project as proposed, it didn't go past the Article 14 thresholds. So we didn't have cause to force the applicant to redo the intersection. And quite honestly, if we were going to redo the intersection, it wouldn't be as it is today, and it would probably be a $10 million ask. So we felt comfortable with the conditions that we've imposed today, and given that the volumes are really low, 18 trips in the morning spread out over an hour, and then 22 trips in the afternoon spread out over an hour, it's, the traffic impacts are fairly minimal, in my opinion.
Okay, again, just to echo what I said at the previous hearing, you know, I just want to make sure we're protected, we have options. There's not a lot of options, really, unless we redo the whole thing.
Right.
But I just want to make sure we're protected, take kind of a conservative route, and, you know, let's see what really happens.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And hopefully, you know, I'm wrong, and the volumes are down.
Right.
And we can make it work.
Right. If there is a situation where that occurs, it would be back before the planning board to explain that.
Yep, okay.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Kent?
Yeah, a couple of questions, please. Financial background, not an engineering background, but, you know, I've toured the site several times, and every time, on a scale of 1 to 10, with 1 being easy and 10 being difficult, where is, what is this site on the spectrum?
You know, I don't find it a difficult site, but I do this for a living. You know, if you're a layperson, you look at it, it's topography issues, but we deal with that frequently. It does pose challenges. Every site is unique, right? No two pieces of land or two sites are the same. But working with Sean Hardy for many years, we have a top-notch engineer, we hire the, you know, basically, we hire the best contractors. So we've been doing it a long time, same contractors with us for years. We've, you know, we've studied the site for over three years. We've worked with the archdiocese on it, so definitely has its challenges, but we're used to that.
Okay, thank you. The traffic and access, so how does that, the 55-plus work? The assumption there is that they're basically two-person households or three- or four-person households?
Yeah, that's generally what you see, two-person households. So they're two bedrooms. They can have guests, they can have guests that stay over. But generally, you're building it for a lifestyle, 55 and older, there's no children. You know, they may have grandkids staying over, they may have company coming over, but primarily, they're two, you know, two, you know, two people that reside there. So, you know, that's the benefit in terms of traffic. So I think, I think that's good.
Okay, and then the last question. Units 2 through 6 are essentially where the church was. Just so I can little set that, is that the units 2 through 6 roughly the same size as the church building, or bigger or smaller?
Yeah, in terms of length and width, they're very similar. A few feet shorter. Church is very long, but yeah, they're pretty close in scale. Certainly not as tall, but in terms of length and width. But, you know, its positioning on the site is very much the same as where the church, and we did that to pay homage to the church, right? We said, it's a good opportunity just to mark that where that church stood. So I think it's going to create great curb appeal.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Most of my questions had been answered, but I did want to follow up. In the last meeting, you had mentioned an easement, or a potential easement, to provide access to an outbuilding on one of the residents' properties. Has that moved forward?
I don't, I don't recall that.
Okay. There was a resident who didn't have access to maybe her garage, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I don't think I said that I'd give them an easement. I think that we sent them a letter many years ago, and we're going to work with them. If we can work with them, great. But, you know, we pay taxes for our land, but we, you know, we're good neighbors. We've developed great relationships with some of the neighbors, so it's our intention to work in spirit with them. I know it's a disruption to them, so, but we're not, we're not giving out any easements.
And then what's your phasing at this point? What do you anticipate? Like, how are you breaking this up, and what would your calendar roughly be?
So we're looking at probably blocks of 10, and that's all based on velocity. I'll tell you, the interest in this project has been off the charts at this point. I, you know, if I were to guess, I'd say we're probably looking at a two-year, start-to-finish, sell-out type project. But again, that's market, market will drive that. But we're confident in the product. It's unique.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Kane?
My only question was, are these going to have basements?
So, you know, there will be basements in the center units, in between the roadways. Some of these units will, so there will be a combination of slab-on-grade and walkout basements. For instance, this one on Hawthorne that's kind of modeled after a standalone will have a walkout basement.
Not a tremendous amount of overexcavation or soil management in that regard, but obviously there's grading, but, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of questions on the conditions and just the timeframe of different things. So one of the questions was where conservation stood, which was answered. But how was the stormwater handled in the order of conditions? Was that similar to the?
Similar conditions. So peer reviews, you know, they're basically mirror image. Peer review consultant, as well as stormwater, will come out, observe the additional test pits, and just, I'm glad that you mentioned that. One of the things is, we will have some limited clearing. The reason we didn't do those test pits, so our intention, you know, our intent, and we'll work with Connor and, and, I'm sorry, Peter. Peter, nice to meet you. We'll work, we'll work with staff to make sure that we're all on sync on that. So we'll install the erosion control, work with our peer review consultant, get those test pits done. But to do that, we'll have some limited clearing to give us access.
Okay. And Assistant Director Murphy, you said that the construction schedule was one of the conditions in here, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, because that was one of my concerns, was just to make sure that it wasn't the full clearing and then the testing and then?
Yeah. No, so we'll put together a baseline schedule. I think our intention is, and I'll just, you know, we want to start within, you know, this first lot here, get these established, as we're establishing these units, get in, get the roadway, get the utilities, get as much of the dusty, dirty work done now so that the residents aren't sitting back for the next two years doing partial roadway installation. We're going to spend a little more time, a little more money, but we're going to get in there and just get it done so that it's least disruptive for the neighbors.
Okay. And the, I know we have the peer review in there with respect to the grading. I didn't see it as a general permit. Is it, I'm not sure if I missed it.
Yes, let me, give me one second, please.
Or if we just added it to 22. I think everybody's on the same page, that the peer review will continue.
Oh, between the peer review with the grading and the stormwater, they're separated.
Yeah.
At the end of this decision, it begins at Condition 59, which is our standard condition as it relates to net cut and fills. And then 60A, prior to the start of the authorized activity, that details the requirements for submitting additional grading information. And then Condition 60B, which states, should the department determine that the revised grading of the site requires professional review, the applicant shall deposit funds to the Department of Planning and Community Development as determined based on solicitation to review the site's current and revised grading design.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And one thing I just wanted to also add to 22, so that's fine as far as the peer review, but one item I had on 22, it says applicant shall satisfy all comments raised within the peer review letter. I just wanted to confirm that that includes recommendations, just because some of the comments are posed as recommendations as opposed to requirements, and I think that's the intent of everybody back and forth, but just to make that more clear.
The Chair, the applicant shall satisfy all comments and recommendations?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
The other item was the fire department. I know we talked at the last meeting about the fire, the turning, the turning plan that was provided, had it going over the driveway in one bit. So I just, I was, wanted to add to that language in 35. I think it's covered here, but I just wanted to add a note to make it clear that if the, if the internal drive doesn't work with the fire apparatus, then the plans need to be modified, including losing a unit if necessary.
Yeah, we wouldn't accept that condition. What we would say is we'll modify, but we're not going to lose a unit just arbitrarily. So that's, we wouldn't accept the condition where we could lose a unit. I think we've met with the fire department, we've had testimony from our traffic engineer, we've given a plan. I think, I think, look, it's in our interest to make sure the fire circulation works. I know that was a concern at CBS, didn't turn out to be a concern at all. It's our intention to make it work, we'll work with staff to do that, but we're not going to accept a condition that potentially would cause us not to have another unit.
So what would happen then?
So, so, so we?
If we couldn't get the turning plan?
Well, I think, I think the turning radius plan was pretty clear on its face. Do you have a copy of that, Connor? Because I'd like to put it up.
It's in file.
Okay. So we did submit a turning radius plan here early, and then we had our traffic engineer test, give you testimony because it was questioned on grades, explain the NFPA standards on grades, we showed the circulation plan, we showed the grass creek. Your concern, if I recall correctly, to our traffic engineer, was a small portion that might swing into a driveway. Well, that's easily cured by moving that driveway, but we haven't gotten into that, and that's why I think we accepted the condition relative to the fire department. But we've met with the fire department, they've never seen an issue with it. We've had testimony from our traffic engineer, and we submitted a plan, so we can't accept additional conditions.
Well, you can move the unit, but the unit's pressed up against the wetland. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that?
No, no, I understand.
It doesn't matter to me if it's 50 units or 51 units. I just want to make sure, you've got an awfully long road, and I want to make sure that a fire truck can get through there and turn around and get to one of the units in the back. That's all I'm trying to achieve.
No, I understand. And again, I have to trust the fire department knows that, how their apparatus works, and I think Connor will attest to it. It's been said many times in many meetings, they have no issue with it. We have a fire turning plan, but if there were an issue, it's in our interest to cure that. But your earlier comment that we could lose a unit, we wouldn't accept that.
Right, well, that's, my concern is this hairpin turn coupled with the driveway that goes over and still goes over. And so if the fire truck, if the fire plan comes back and says it can't make that turn, and the conditions in there that it has to make that turn, all I'm trying to say is that something needs to be modified.
Sure, no, yeah, no, no.
Including potentially losing a unit. Hopefully, it can be satisfied without that. That certainly wouldn't be the first.
No, absolutely. And again, that's why we went through the extraordinary length of having a meeting with the fire department, having them advise Connor that they have no issue, and that's really who we should look to, because it's in their purview, not this board's purview. Fire safety is in the NFPA standard. So I think we've met the requisite, we're going to continue to work with that, and if there is an issue, we'll solve it, but it wouldn't involve losing a unit. We, you know, we don't want to put conditions to jeopardize our approval. That would jeopardize our approval. So I think the condition as it states is more than sufficient.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my position here is that we're putting a lot of what-ifs into this decision, a lot more what-ifs than we ever really put into any decisions, and we're trying to work with you. And I think a lot of that has been because there's been really good community outreach, and you've been able to address a lot of the issues going in. But fire is sort of a big one. I mean, I do, I work on projects also, and typically there needs to be a sidewalk if you have the side road. Typically, there needs to be a lot of things. I'm not trying to go through all the little itty-bitty things. I just want to make sure that it's clear that we don't come into a point where the fire truck turning radius doesn't work and the town is taking the risk as opposed to you. All I'm asking is that?
No, no.
If you're confident that the fire truck is going to work, then what does it matter?
Absolutely. Well, you know, it does matter because the, you know, first of all, we've, you know, I appreciate that you feel that you're making a lot of concessions here. I would argue differently, belts and suspenders. I think we've won above and beyond with allowing a peer reviewer to test pits. I guess we're, I'm just not seeing it. I think the requisite has always been with this board, that if the fire department accepts that, if I can demonstrate it on a plan, and I have a traffic engineer that spoke to it, I don't know why you would want to further condition something on the fire department.
Well, to be fair, your traffic engineer did say that the driveway needed to be modified because that would be a fire truck issue, and it hasn't been modified on the plan as of now, and there's a condition. But what happens if it can't be, because now it's sitting into the wetland?
Well, I think, I think you got to take a practical approach. What, do you think that we're going to build something that wouldn't work? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. We do this for a living, we know, we know what the radius is out, we've met with the fire department. I think we have more information on our side of the table to give us confidence to support the acceptance of the condition that's in there, but to arbitrarily say we should condition it further that if we can't do something, we lose a unit. Just not, not something. I don't think you would accept that in your professional practice.
I mean, the only thing that I could say is that because of the size of the posse, there's other land there. So if we run into that type of problem, we can overcome that problem, just by virtue of the fact that there's 12 acres of land there, and we're only using seven and a half acres or thereabouts.
All right. What if we just added on there that the plan will be revised as necessary to ensure safe circulation?
That's fine.
Okay, all right.
Perfectly.
My other one hopefully won't be as much back and forth, but the master deed, I just wanted to move that to earlier in timeframe before the building permit issued, that the town can take a look at the master deed.
Well, it would be a proposed master deed.
Right. And I had another, hold on. And then just as far as the, it says on there, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the town can review the draft of the master deed. And the second item on there, including implementing the operation and management plan for the stormwater. Is there anything else, Assistant Director, that you wanted to add to that?
Yes, just apologies, and I had missed this, having put in this together in short order. Mr. Clements had testified today that he is looking to provide two off-site affordable housing units. I would like that reflected in a condition, and we would add that as Condition 62, reworking 62 to 63, or I apologize, we would make that, we would add a condition under operational ongoing where the applicant, prior to the issuance of the last certificate of occupancy, provides proof they're providing four unit, two affordable units off-site at 80% AMI.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any members that have any other? Oh, there's not. Yeah. All right, any other, yes, Member Conley?
Question for staff related to the affordable units, would those also be two-bedroom units?
If we want to make them two-bedroom units, we can cite the condition, so two-bedroom units, 80% AMI.
Is required.
No affordable units, but frankly, it was a private negotiation, it was a negotiation through the mayor's office. So to answer your question, we have no problem providing two, and they should be two-bedroom units. If we're building these, we have no problem with two-bedroom units.
Very good, thank you.
He would have to work with a housing consultant and provide proof that he's creating these affordable units. If we want to put in the language that it'd be de-restricted, with the AMI requirement, we should do so as well.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think with that, we do have a correspondence list somewhere, and I lost it. So we're just looking for a motion to add the correspondence through, Connor, do you have the date? Is it today?
It would be today. We've got the conditions.
Okay, all right. So a motion to incorporate the correspondence received through today and to the record.
Still moved?
We have a motion by Member Conley. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Member Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion by Member Kent, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then, so we'd be looking for a motion on the application for site plan review under the draft decision dated April 9th, and incorporating the conditions as discussed on the record tonight.
Still moved?
We have a motion to approve by Member Conley, do we have a second?
Aye. Second, sorry.
A second by Member Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, that's the last item on our agenda, so just looking for a motion to close tonight's public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Member Kent, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.